We're grateful that you're here. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance and then we'll go from there. I'm gonna try to use my inside voice today. I flew a couple of weeks ago and I haven't been able to get my ear to pop since then. Anyways, talking to my good ear. Joan, can you please do a roll call for us?
Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Charles Long. Michael Shaw.
Here.
Persilla Benali.
Conceda.
Kevin Mitchell.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and proceed. Item number two, approval of today's agenda.
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with one change. Remove H under the consent agenda items, the approval of the 2024-2025 addenda.
And President Mortensen, if I could just add a little bit on that. Reasons for that is I miscommunicated about the addenda for the next year. It's for a different meeting and it got put on this agenda, so I just wanted to make sure people know that that was not meant to be on the agenda.
No problem. So, that motion is just to remove item 4H, which was just a mistake on the agenda. Okay, perfect. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mortensen, I would like to second.
Okay. All right, roll call please, Joan.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item is the approval of the minutes from our February 5th regular meeting.
Ms. Mortensen, I would like to approve the meeting minutes that we received and reviewed in writing. Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaw. Roll call please.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. All right. So, now down to the approval of the consent agenda, which is items 4A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and I.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items for A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and I.
Perfect.
Mr. Mortensen, I'd like to second, but I also have a question.
Go ahead.
On, the first one is 4F, the MOU with Three Rivers Education Foundation with GMCS. Can you explain what that MOU is?
I think that would be great. Let's, we'll turn the time over to Mr. Hyatt for that.
President Mortensen, Ms. Benali, the Three Rivers, what is it called? Three Rivers Education Foundation. This has to do with staff being able to become teachers. It's a residency program for the school district. And so, this organization does this where they receive money. It's a state award that they receive the funds in order to recruit teachers and administrators in the state. And we are partnering with them in order for our staff, if anybody on our staff or somebody that's in the community wants to do a residency program with us, and they actually get paid. So, if a teacher, somebody is going to become a teacher, maybe it's an EEA, they finish their degree and they have to do their student teaching, they would actually get paid to do their student teaching at a full pay rate. And so, in the old days, you'd have to do student teaching for free. And so, this is a great opportunity, and again, these are dollars coming from the state to allow for student teachers to make a living while they're becoming teachers. And so, it's a great program.
I appreciate that very much. And then, the next one, I saw a whole list of the fixed assets going from hotspots and all this other stuff. What happens to those?
Mr. Mortensen, Ms. Benali, what happens to the hotspots?
Well, all the stuff that's listed on there.
It depends on what the item is, but I can have Ms. Hanks come up and give you a little more detail about where those items go. Obviously, things like computers have to be disassembled in a certain way, and those materials have to be disposed of in a certain way. Some things can be auctioned off, some things are deleted and thrown away. So, go ahead.
President Mortensen, members of the board, and Superintendent Ms. Benali, Mike just summed that up pretty good. So, computers that have memory and those types of things do have to be wiped in a fashion. And then additionally, things that are able to be surplus, that there is a market for them, then we put them on gov.deals. And you can access that link from the GMCS website under the procurement tab. There's a surplus link, and so, all of the items that go up for surplus will be on that link.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mortensen.
Thank you. I also, one question on here on E. It says just Sherry and Dane Lamson participating in procurement. I assume they're employees and this is just to give them permission to bid on something?
President Mortensen, members of the board, yes.
Okay, easy enough. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Ms. Benali?
Um, yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. All right, down to number five, study circle. Is there any public comment for today?
No.
All right, so the next thing is the superintendent report.
President Mortensen, members of the board, we have a couple of items today that we wanted to present. First of all, we have J.D. Bullington, our lobbyist for the school district that's with us. And we asked him, since the session is over, not that everything's had a chance to be signed yet, or there's some other information. I'm sure they'll be coming forward, but we thought it would be good to have a legislative update. The session has actually ended and talk about some of those bills that made it through or didn't make it through. And so, I'd like to invite Mr. Bullington to come up and give his report on those items.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyatt, members of the Gallup McKinley County School District Board. It's nice to see all of you again. So, I'm in my second, here, this is my second session as the lobbyist for this school district. And with Superintendent Hyatt and with Javanna Hanks, who's large in, I'm liable when it comes to understanding school finances. I have some pretty good support when it comes to analyzing legislation and taking positions on certain matters that are.
I'm not sure if your microphones work. And talk a little closer to it so we can double check.
We, I know there's some batteries in there because I can hear it a little bit. Sometimes it's the distance you are away, how much it picks up, and so, it may, the batteries may have been low enough.
Check, one, two.
There we go. You have to eat it a little bit.
Check, one, two. How's that?
We just want to make sure you're loud so the World Wide Web can hear.
Okay, great. I'm J.D. Bullington, myself and Charlie Marcus are the lobbyists for the Gallup McKinley County School District. This is our second legislative session, and I want to give you a quick briefing on some of the big issues that happened. So, I want to talk about some legislation that passed. I also want to talk about the capital outlay situation. And then, I want to end with what's going to be one of the major issues in the interim period where the Legislative Education Study Committee is going to take a look at revising some key components of the SEG, the State Equilization Guarantee Funding Formula. We do expect to see legislation on that subject in the 2025 legislative session. And I want to highlight the areas for you that they are considering tweaking. So, let's first start with some bills that passed, and Superintendent Hyatt is correct. The governor has until, I believe, noon on March 6th, noon on March 6th, to sign or veto the bills that are on her desk. So, I'm gonna hit those real quick and only talk about a couple that did not pass. I expect the bills that I'm gonna be mentioning, I'm only gonna talk about three, three basically. I expect, we expect those bills to be, to be signed by the governor. So, there were a couple of substantive bills that passed. The first one, I think, worth mentioning is House Bill 171. And what does that do? Well, it changes high school graduation requirements. And the primary thing that this bill did is that it was amended in the House Education Committee, and it removes, starting in the 2025-26 school year, it removes the requirements that high school students must demonstrate competency in the core academic subjects of mathematics, reading and language arts, writing, social science, as a requirement to receiving a high school diploma. Now, what does that mean? Simply translated, it means as long as that high school student completes their coursework in these subjects, that's gonna be good enough. They no longer, in conjunction with completing their coursework, have to demonstrate competency. So, they're eliminating that assessment piece of it. That's primarily, that's primarily the big piece in the bill. Financial literacy is a big subject every session. There are a lot of groups that want to see financial literacy required. And financial literacy remains an elective and it remains an offering. So, those are, there are some other things in the bill, but I'm, you know, it's, I'm not gonna go into it. There's several sections of it. But that's basically the big, the big substantive part of that legislation. And if you want more information about that, well, it's, you know, it is House Bill 171, and I can provide more detailed analysis. I know Javanna understands this bill like the back of her hand. So, if you need more information on it, we can certainly do that. So.
Mr. Bullington, I'll just add a few more pieces onto that as we go through.
Yeah.
As far as the graduation, and I reported about this last, the last meeting, but not only is financial literacy, it's allowed for a math credit, and they removed Algebra II.
They removed that.
And so, in addition to that, many of the courses, this is kind of pertinent to the work that we're doing in the district, working with career pathways and helping students develop skills towards their careers, is that there's some more flexibility that allows school districts to get approval for certain pathway courses to also count as core courses. So, for example, there may be an engineering course that could potentially also count as a math credit. It gives more flexibility for students, more opportunities for students to be involved in coursework, where they're getting the content, where they're getting the instruction with regards to the standards, but also able to use those courses as their three core sequence towards receiving a career pathway certification. And so, there's some good things. We supported this bill. We didn't support it last year because the flexibility wasn't built in, it was just alluded to. But this particular bill was much more clear with respect to graduation requirements, and so, it was a positive one.
Thank you. The next bill I want to mention, the next substantive bill that passed, we expect it to be signed, is Senate Bill 137.
We have a question, sorry.
I'm sorry, I was trying to, I unmuted myself. Mr. Mortensen, I'd like to ask the question, please, and the question is, will we as a board get updates when, how we're gonna make this change in our school district?
Correct. Mr. Mortensen, Ms. Benali, we will have to do some work around that this next year, maybe even the summer, to prepare for that. It gets enacted for the 25-26 school year, so we have a little bit of time. But there are some, we want to make sure that our graduation course requirements from the district standpoint is very clear for our students moving forward. And there's a lot of opportunity in that. So, obviously, what we want to do with financial literacy and Algebra II, how we want to work with our pathway courses. Now, some of that's gonna take approval from the PED, but there's gonna be some legwork that we'll have to do on our end to make sure we're ready as a board.
So, they're saying now, at this point, we can count financial literacy as a credit?
No, in the future.
In the future.
25-26, I believe it's the freshmen, starting in that year. So, students, the current graduation requirements will still apply to the students in high school that are in high school now.
Thank you.
Okay. Senate Bill 137. This bill has a couple of pieces in it, two or three pieces that are, I think, of interest. Number one, it lays out a new, new requirements for training for school board members, and I'll highlight that briefly. It also contains a provision relating to the extension of a contract of the superintendent for termination of the superintendent, which I'll highlight real quick, it's a technical fix. And then, it also has some new campaign. If you receive contributions, there are some new reporting requirements on that. So, first, let me talk about the training for the school board members. So, this, this bill now, upon signature of the governor, is gonna require that all new school board members have to complete a minimum of 10 hours of training in the first year of their term, and then followed by a minimum of five hours of training for the subsequent years of their term. So, what areas are we talking about? For the new school board members, you get training on laws and department policies and procedures affecting the board. You get training on public school finance, budgeting, fiduciary responsibility. You get training on legal concepts pertaining to local school boards and districts, including the Open Meetings Act, effective governance practices, and student achievement and student support services. That's the training for the new board members. And all school board members, after they complete that and subsequent years, have to do a minimum of five hours of annual training, annually, in these areas. Very similar, laws and department policies that affect the school boards, public school finance, budgeting, fiduciary responsibility, local school board's role in evaluating and improving student academic achievement, the school board's role in providing a safe learning environment conducive to improving student outcomes, again, legal concepts pertaining to local school boards and school districts, including the Open Meetings Act, effective governance practices, and any other matters deemed relevant by the Department of Education. I don't know exactly who's gonna be providing that training, but it is now gonna be a requirement in statute.
The training happens with the School Board Association, and it also could be done locally in school board meetings, for example, in attorney. So, there's various options for that, but most, most training comes through the School Board Association.
Okay. The other thing this bill did, it was amended in the Senate Education Committee. It adds a new provision to state law that prohibits a school board from either extending the contract of a superintendent or terminating that superintendent without cause in that time period between the regular local election of the school board and 60 days after the new school board is seated and convened. So, it's, it's basically restricting your ability to extend the contract of the superintendent or terminate the superintendent without cause during that new narrow window. And that's, those are the key pieces of this bill.
Thanks for pointing that out so clearly. We didn't support it. We were kind of neutral on that particular bill, but.
Well, it is a key provision in the bill, Superintendent, so I thought I'd bring it up.
You brought it home, yes.
Okay. The third bill I want to hit is a technical bill that Javanna and I have discussed, and it does not affect the district. But it's, it relates to the waivers regarding the local match that's required on public school capital outlay. This is a technical fix that, Javanna, does not affect the district. If you want to explain this.
The technical fix doesn't change anything, but that, we already knew that this was coming. I think it's just a.
What bill is it?
Senate Bill 76.
Yes, and this just delineates that the waiver process will consider the Phase 2 formula instead of the current reduced Phase 2 formula. They're doing the one-third and a half on matches for a, for a period of time. And so, this just clarifies that any waiver should be considered on the original Phase 2 formula. And, and I kind of say it doesn't impact us because they never give us any money.
Yeah, they've never given us a waiver, even though we've asked multiple times.
Asked multiple times.
And they exist because of us, but the district in Zuni, so.
All right. I want to talk about now some other pieces of legislation that were of interest to us that didn't really get over the finish line in their current form, but some of them were rolled into other measures. We were watching Senate Bill 260. This was introduced by Senator George Munoz of Gallup. He's the chair of the Senate Finance Committee. Senator Munoz introduced an appropriation bill for $5 million. And the way that piece of legislation originally was worded is that $1 million would go to the Zuni, would go to Zuni Pueblo.
The school district, correct?
To the Zuni Public School District.
Right.
Originally. And then, the other $4 million would be split between the Central Consolidated School District and the Gallup McKinley County School District. That's the way it was worded. Appropriation bills are often misunderstood, and people, people think because they don't move, they're dead. Appropriation bills that, that have just an appropriation, what happens is they only move so far until they get to the respective budget committee. So, this bill was never destined to move beyond the Senate Finance Committee. It either gets rolled into the budget, or it doesn't, and it's dead. But the bill stops. It's, it's not the same as a policy bill, like I just said, that passes both chambers and gets passed by the governor. So, what happened to this $5 million? Well, it did wind up in the budget. However, it didn't wind up with the same original language. So, there is $5 million in the budget for the Pueblo of Zuni, and then, there's $4 million in the budget for the Navajo Nation. And that's what it says. So, I have to assume that money is going to DODI, the Department of Indian Education. There was a lot of confusion about this. What is Senator Munoz doing? Why the language change? What's going on? And so, I talked to K.D.N. Juanico, the Assistant Superintendent for Indian Education at the Public Education Department. And K.D.N. said that this is basically technically sort of an earmarking of Indian Education Fund monies. This money is originally, I think, gonna flow through PED, and then, it is going to be distributed to the Pueblo of Zuni and to the Navajo Nation for education programming that they determine is in their best interest and they want. Now, that's the best explanation I've gotten so far, and that's from the Assistant Secretary of PED of Indian Education. But I will tell you, I still can't fully explain to you what's.
It's interesting, yeah. Maybe we should ask Senator Munoz why that, why that change was made. So, that's interesting, because he knows very well that those dollars won't come back to the school district for the public schools. It's interesting that it would transition from millions of dollars for us to zero because the tribe is over different parts of education, BI, BIE schools and other grant schools, and so, that's interesting.
Mr. Mortensen? Sir, this money, the $4 million, or I guess $2 million, well, yeah, $4 million that's going to the Navajo Nation, is that this year, just one year, that they're getting that funding? Because the reason why I'm asking is there's a flow-through of the 164 process, I think it's called, through the Navajo Nation that takes months to even get through that process. What happens, and that person, that, that, every entity is backed up with other funding that's supposed to flow through before this even hits there. So, what happens to that funding if it doesn't go through the 164 process of the Navajo Nation?
If the money's not spent, is the question. It goes back to the government. So, if the money doesn't get, doesn't get spent, or it doesn't get put in an account, I guess, then the, then it goes back to the coffers of the state government. That has to be used in this period of time. Is that accurate?
The, it is a non-recurring appropriation, so it is one time.
Is there a time limit on that? Because if there's a time limit of.
I didn't, I didn't see one, but I, I will, so here's the way I would answer this. House Bill 2, the budget, which is the omnibus budget bill, is, is without any qualifying language, it is primarily an operational budget, and it is good for one fiscal year. This particular House Bill 2 kicks in on July 1 of this year, and it provides funding up to June 30 of 2025. Without qualifying language, the way I interpret this is that this money goes to the Navajo Nation and the Pueblo of Zuni as, you know, sometime after July 1, and it gets appropriated to the Indian Education Division, which then sends the money out. If they don't distribute that money within the current fiscal year, I believe the money would just naturally revert back to the general fund. Because this is a non-recurring appropriation that is supposed to be made within that one fiscal year that House Bill 2 relates to. Javanna, do you think I'm correct on that?
Is there any justification or any reasoning that Mr. Munoz switched the names, and then?
I think I can, I think I know what you're gonna say. How about we just have Mr. Bullington actually talk to Mr. Munoz and ask him why dollars that were originally meant for students actually ended up into a federal tribal situation where they're not for our students?
And Superintendent Hyatt, I, I have asked that question to Senator Munoz, and I have not gotten a response.
Okay, well, let's, let's ask again. Now, it's, now it's very public. We're on an open meeting and it's very public. Let's, maybe we have Mr. Munoz come in and explain why those dollars ended up going in a different direction. There could be a valid excuse, I don't know.
And, and Javanna did find qualifying language that I said, remember, if it's not in there, it's gonna revert. However, she did find the qualifying language for this $5 million. And it, the purpose of it is for Indian education initiatives, including $4 million for the Navajo Nation and $1 million for the Zuni Pueblo. Any unexpended balances from this appropriation remaining at the end of fiscal year 2025 shall not revert. So, I would assume that stays in the Indian Education Fund. That's what that would mean.
I wish we got that kind of appropriation, that it didn't have to revert. I don't think that's ever happened. I guess it is an election year.
And one of the other questions I have, sir, is does anywhere in that bill, Senate Bill 260, state now the changes that was made and how that Indian education initiatives is planned out? I mean, is there X amount of dollars for this, X amount of dollars for something else? Is there, I mean, is it exactly what's being said? It's a gift they can spend it any way they want?
The language in Senate Bill 260 was this long. It was just an appropriation bill. That's all it is, that's all it is.
Don't, don't you wish that we got money like that? They, they micromanage the heck out of any money to actual students.
And it was just, like, the appropriation was just like, just to, like, at the tribal level? Or it was specifically to, like, the Education Department or something?
Yes, it was a $5 million appropriation to the Public Education Department, which it still is.
Right.
For use in FY 2025 and beyond. So, for educational programming for public school students, divided $1 million to the Zuni Public School Districts in McKinley County and $4 million to CCSD and Gallup McKinley County School District.
And then, the way it shook out, though, at the end of it, the way it shook out was it was an appropriation to the tribe or to the tribe's education department?
It's an appropriation to the Public Education Department, which means it goes into the Indian Education Fund. And if Javanna, I'm wrong, correct me, but that's where it would go.
To DODI. To DODI.
And then, from the Indian Education Fund, PED will distribute up to a million to the Zuni Pueblo, not school district, the Pueblo, and up to $4 million to the Navajo Nation. It does not say DODI.
That was the question I had. It didn't go to DODI, it just goes to the tribe.
It says to the, that is correct. It goes to the government.
Ripoff. We're still waiting for millions of dollars in JOM funding, so I'm assuming that this is, this will be interesting about where this money. I think we should really follow where the money goes. Not, not that the state can give, or whoever, an individual legislator can give money to whoever they want, but it seems to be masked that this is for our students, but it's not going in a route by where those dollars regularly or ever get used for our students, and so, this is interesting.
And Superintendent Hyatt, I completely agree with you. I think there's a little more detective work to be done here to exactly what's going on, because it's, it's pretty vaguely worded.
And I think there's a lot of people that looked at it and supported it because it's going to students, as we said, especially our students in the rural area. But now, I don't, if, I don't know if it's gonna go to students, and that's. And that's, I mean, if, if it is, then I think we're, we're, we're... It doesn't hurt to ask what they're gonna be doing with these fundings and what's gonna happen to them in the future. But it's good to know that legislators can do that. I don't know. I mean...
Well, we'll find out in a minute. Legislators get a lot of money to give to whoever, right? And that's not, not even through a bill, and so we'll find out in a minute where those dollars went, our local legislators. So I'm excited about that.
And we're gonna get to that point in just a second. Okay, what else, uh, what else is of interest bringing to your attention? Uh, there was a standalone bill that was a, uh, tax deduction for teachers who purchase school supplies. And that was Senate Bill One seventy-one. That standalone bill did not pass, however, however, there was a, an omnibus tax package bill that was put together, House Bill Two fifty-two. And the legislature usually passes some kind of tax reform or tax package bill every session. And this year, in that tax package bill, they rolled this into the tax bill. Only it's no longer a deduction against your taxable income. They turned it into a tax credit. So that means now when teachers purchase school supplies for their classroom and their students, out of their pocket, they can now get a tax credit against other taxes that they may own to the state, against their personal income tax. So it's no longer deduction against taxable income. It is a credit against other tax liabilities that the teachers incur on a personal basis. So, you know, this has been talked about for a long time. Teachers spending money out of their pockets to buy pencils and all kinds of school supplies. So the legislature has done something to help defray those costs for the teachers.
Fortunately, we pay for all those supplies, but in the case that a teacher wants to pay, I guess, although we provide everything that they need, I guess that's a positive thing for them.
Yeah, there you go. One of the biggest bills of the legislative session was not an education bill, but it had, that failed. It had enormous ramifications for every private and public sector employer in the state, regardless of how many employees you have. And I'm talking about the Paid Family Medical Leave Act bill. This is the second year this bill has failed to pass the legislature. Uh, it came closer this year than it did last year. It passed the Senate, and this is Senate Bill Three, by the way. That's the name of the bill. It was a Senate bill that passed the Senate, but when it got over to the House, it failed to pass the House on a vote of thirty-four to thirty-six. Now, there are seventy members in the House, so all seventy members of the House voted on this legislation, and to pass, you gotta have a majority. So it was two votes shy. If it had picked up one other vote, it still would have failed thirty-five, thirty-five, because it fails on a tie. But if they had picked up a second vote, it would have passed thirty-six, thirty-four. So what happened to this bill? Well, let me explain the vote count to you. We have forty-five Democrats in the House and twenty-five Republicans, almost a two to one. There were eleven Democrats who voted with all twenty-five Republicans to get to that thirty-six vote count. Twenty-five Rs plus eleven Ds. And these eleven Democrats tend to be more moderate, I will say. I hate to use the word conservative, but they're more... They're not as socially progressive as the other members who were really pushing this bill. I think that's a, that's a very safe way to say it. And it was an interesting mix. This is public information. I don't have all the votes memorized, but I can name some people who you're gonna recognize who voted against paid family medical leave. Representative Anthony Allison, Navajo man out of Shiprock. Representative Wanda Johnson, a Democrat that, whose district is very close to here. Representative Patty Lundstrom, whose district we are in, voted against it. Representative Joseph Sanchez, Representative Ambrose Castellano, Rep., former Albuquerque City Councilor Cynthia Barrego. I'm not gonna name all of them, but these people all do have something in common, and that's a more moderate Democratic, uh, leaning than the more socially progressive Democrats. This bill will come back. Uh, there's no question it will come back. And it may be revised to get it to some form that can pass. For example, there was another measure in the House on paid family medical leave, House Bill Eleven. And House Bill Eleven made the program voluntary, and instead of twelve weeks of paid family medical leave per year, per employee, it suggested up to nine weeks of paid, paid family medical leave per employee per year. And the eligibility use was much more narrow, primarily focused on pregnancy, birth of a child, either parent could use it, death of a child, loss of a child, that sort of thing. Um, so Senate Bill Three was politically heavier, obviously, much longer period of time, broader use, not, not voluntary. It was, it was mandatory, and affected every employer, uh, in the state. So, uh, it failed, but it is coming back. And there were, there were some governmental entities that sort of publicly were quiet, but privately behind the scenes, expressing some real serious concerns about this. The Association of Counties, for one, they were, there were some concerns about the effects on county government operations. There were some municipalities. I heard from some mayors that said, you know, this is, this has the potential to, you know, really affect everything from trash pickup to police service. So it's a very, it's a very broad bill. It has passed in several other states in varying forms. Just to give you an idea, Illinois passed a Paid Family Medical Leave Act, and employees can take up to forty hours a year. That's one week. Senate Bill Three was twelve weeks per year, per, per employee. Hospitals also had concerns about this for obvious reasons. So it was a heavy bill, and eleven Democrats bolted and said, "Too heavy", and voted with Republicans to stop it. But that is coming back.
Mr. Mortensen. Um, Mr. Hyatt, how would this, if it did pass, how would it affect our school district?
Mr. Mortensen, Ms. Benali, one, one of the things that's still a little bit of an unknown, we'd have to talk to our attorney about it, is there's already exemption federally for educators, um, employers that don't have to follow FMLA to the T like other employers do, just because of the drastic effect that that can have on, on students and having a teacher in that classroom. And so there is a little bit different language in the federal law of how FMLA can be used, and it's a little bit different for educational institutions like ours. Um, how this particular bill would be in lieu of those, or if it can be in lieu of federal law, I'm not quite certain, um, but I'd, I'd probably wanna get a review on how that would affect us. But, but if, if, if MLA, if MLA was granted and it was allowed, um, that means, for example, a teacher or a spouse of a teacher who was having a baby, for example, would be out, be able to take leave for twelve weeks. Um, and obviously, that's something that we would have to... There's, there's a financial cost to that, and I think part of the bill had some contribution. Was it from the employer or from the employee?
So it was from both, sir?
Yeah, so, so there was, there was some skin in the game from the district and from the, from the employees themselves who have to fund this. This isn't like an unfunded mandate. It's funded, that's pretty much just from the people that would have to either have employees or the employees themselves that would wanna use it. It would come out of their pockets to pay for it. I don't know. I guess it depends on your stance or what the situation is, whether that would be a valuable thing or not, but it obviously didn't pass, so.
Yeah, and I was just gonna mention that this did not appear in the budget, and so the portion that would have been on the school district for a match would have been a financial burden on the school district. And, and I think that was part of the discussions, is considerations, is how could the state be even afford this heavy of a lift with no existing monetary support?
And I would just add, the way that it worked is it creates a fund that the employer pays into, they pay a certain amount per employee into the fund, and each employee pays part of their paycheck into the fund. And then when the employee decides they wanna take paid family medical leave, they are not paid a salary by the employer. They are compensated during that period out of the money that everyone put into the fund. That's how it works.
So I guess it is an unfunded mandate on our end, at least. It would have been, so.
Is that a state-managed fund?
Yes.
I bet that would work out great.
Well, it's coming back. Okay, um, let me just mention a couple of others. There's one other bill I wanna highlight before I talk about, you know, next year and Capitol Outlay, and I'm wrapping up here. A lot of discussion on House Bill One thirty-four, the Tribal Education Trust Fund. This was this sort of, you know, wiggled around all over the place in the legislature. It, it basically establishes a new trust fund that can be where the proceeds off of the fund, you know how trust funds work, generates money for, off the corpus of the fund that can be used for certain types of education programs going forward.
For tribes.
For, strictly for tribes.
Correct. This is similar to Senator Munoz's bill, Senator Munoz's bill, that the money would go to the tribes for some educational wants or needs. I'm making sure it's clear, it wasn't a bill that was for, um, public students.
So, and, and this is a great point, Superintendent Hyatt. The, the language in the bill said, "The money can be used for any purpose enumerated in an intergovernmental agreement between PED and an Indian nation, tribe, or pueblo." So in other words, you reach an agreement with PED, what that pueblo, Indian nation, or tribe wants to use the money for, you come to an agreement, and then you can use the money for whatever is in the agreement.
Yeah, that, that could be for whatever, literally.
Well, you know, there's a reason it didn't pass. And then the, the, the piece that I think where it got hung up, what got hung up was there, the original bill, before it was amended, created a task force that would oversee the management of this money. And uh, this was sponsored by a pueblo man, Representative Derek Lente of Sandia Pueblo. And the Navajo Nation was, they never were really completely comfortable with this idea, the task force. So it got amended, and it got all put back on PED, and PED was gonna be the overseer of them. So this bill, um, passed the House. It went through its House committees. It passed the House floor. It passed its Senate Education Committee, and it got to the Senate floor. And, uh, this was a bill we were neutral on. I did not lobby for the passage of this bill. We were just kind of monitoring it. Um, by all accounts, it looked like it had the votes. It looked like it had enough votes to pass the Senate. And it had even money in the budget. The legislature put fifty million dollars into House Bill Two to track with this bill, the enabling legislation creating the fund. And the money in House Bill Two said fifty million dollars for the Tribal Education Trust Fund, contingent on the passage of House Bill One thirty-four. Well, House Bill One thirty-four did not pass, so that fifty million dollars reverts back to the state now. But something happened on the Senate floor, and the bill just kind of blew up. The sponsor pulled the bill and decided he did not want to put this up for a vote in front of the full Senate for reasons that are not fully still known at this time. But he changed his mind and decided that, uh, for whatever reason, it got too controversially at the end, and he didn't wanna subject it to a vote and subject it to a long debate. You know, in the House, you know, we're, we're talking about at the end of the session now. In the House, there's a three-hour debate, debate limit. So you can't really filibuster in the House for more than three hours. But there's no time limit in the Senate. So I suspect something blew up somewhere behind the scenes. And it was, this is my theory, it was communicated to the sponsor that somebody's really unhappy with this thing, and they're prepared to kill it by filibustering it and killing all the other bills that are behind it. There's, that's my theory. I don't know exactly what happened. Again, more detective work is needed on this. But something happened to blow this bill up and to cause the sponsor to just withdraw it and not subject it to a final vote.
I'll make a comment about that bill. Couple of comments. First of all, I wanna thank the Navajo Nation. This, this session, we saw a dramatic increase in their efforts, especially around the topics in education, um, to lobby and to work with, in regards to the session, to, to try to get fair funding for the Navajo Nation. And to some extent, maybe not this, this bill particularly, but for, for our students. Having said that, this bill, although we stayed somewhat neutral on the bill, uh, we, we had talked with the Navajo Nation prior to the session about being very careful about where labeled education dollars go. Because often, if not almost always, uh, when dollars like this are given to tribes or to school districts, Navajo students are given less of, less dollars on average per student than other Native American students in the state of New Mexico. Um, that's been a big issue for us. Um, it's also been a big issue for us within our Yasi Martinez lawsuit, Capitol Outlay lawsuit, uh, where dollars are, where our students are not being treated fairly. Um, I think sometimes it's easy for a small group of individuals to want the same amount of money as a large group of individuals. Those dollars can't be spread out as evenly. So if you have a pueblo with a thousand students, and you have a Navajo Nation with tens of thousands of students in New Mexico, you can't give the same dollar amounts to each group and expect that those dollars are going to have as big of an impact, because they're not. There's too many students for those dollars to be spread out by. I mean, so that was one of the things that we had, had let them to be cautioned them as they go into some of these things, to really look at what, what the fair share is for predominantly our students that are Navajo students in our part of the state. Now, these dollars in this particular bill were not necessarily gonna go to us. Again, they were gonna go to the tribe. I mean, if the state wants to do that, that's fine. But one of the problems that we had with this particular bill was that they were hinging it on as a solution to the Yasi Martinez lawsuit. Well, the Yasi Martinez lawsuit isn't about tribes or federally funded schools. It was about public schools in New Mexico, and we're actually a plaintiff in that lawsuit. Um, this would have never been a solution to the Yasi Martinez lawsuit. But I've seen, uh, I've seen some legislators go through legislative process using the Yasi Martinez lawsuit as a way to get dollars for their purposes, whatever those are for. Um, and so i- in those cases, people need to be very careful about what they, what they support, uh, because those dollars were not, they're not gonna resolve the lawsuit. Uh, if we're before the judge, um, it's not gonna fly that these dollars are, are gonna make any headway in the state resolving it. Um, so it's unfortunate that the Yasi Martinez lawsuit, and our names as students here, as our school district and the other five districts that are in the, in the lawsuit, along with the other plaintiffs, um, it's a, it's a disservice to the many of our students here in our part of the state when people are using this lawsuit for their own purposes. And so, again, I applaud the Navajo Nation for, um, doing their best to try to get the fair share of those dollars if the bill did pass. I think they did a great job. Um, I heard a, I heard a report from, um, Council Delegate Arviso, I believe it was. Is that correct, Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Uh, we were at a chapter meeting in, um, Yambito, and they were talking about, he was giving a report on this bill, uh, and it was very interesting to listen to his perspective on it. Um, but then today, it was kind of interesting that we had a, a chapter president, Sonny Moore, who seemed to really support this bill, um, even though the dollars didn't go to our school district. And so, so there, there was an interesting dynamic on, within the Navajo Nation about who supports it and who doesn't. And I'm not sure where, um, they would get information that said this was a great thing for Navajo students, but from our perspective, it, it probably wasn't going to ever reach any Navajo students in our area. Um, but you, you never know.
Mr. Mortensen. Are you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I, I just wanna make sure I addressed that we, again, we stayed neutral on this bill, uh, and that we, uh, will, will look in the future to see if Navajo students, not only in this area, but we continue to look in other areas, and that the Navajo Nation, our students that are part of the Navajo Nation, that are members of the Navajo Nation, have always been treated unfairly. And so as a school district, we need to continue to be vigilant, um, in making sure that dollars that are for Indian education, we actually get our fair share, because even right now- uh, we actually get our fair share. Because even right now with the Public Education Department, although they've started to give a little bit more, maybe ease us because we fought so hard for some of these dollars, it is still not fair currently. Indian education funds that come to our district are the same or, or less per student than most other Native American school districts in the state of New Mexico. Uh, so we look forward to continuing our partnership with the Navajo Nation. Uh, our lobbying efforts in other school districts that are also getting shortchanged, like Central Consolidated School District, and even sometimes Zuni Pueblo, even though a pueblo, um, but they're one of the largest, if not the largest in New Mexico, that we often see them get shortchanged for when smaller pueblos get more dollars. And so, that's my, my spiel.
Um, thank you very much, um, sir, for giving me some time to speak on this bill too. Um, you know, as a Dene woman, one of the things that, uh, I totally agree with what Mr. Hyatt is saying about our students as Dene children get their fair share, you know, and, and that's what really bothered me about this bill. And there's another bill, it's a college bill, that they kind of did the same thing. I want to say it's House Bill one thirty-one.
One thirty-five.
One thirty-five. Um, that was trying to do the same thing where they were giving our colleges less money, but like, the bigger colleges, more money, and just giving one percent or two percent to Dene College and, and TU. Um, it's ki- it's similar, and that, and, and they're using Yasi Martinez to try to get our, the funding. And, and, you know, I, I don't know where they were when we were doing this lawsuit because I don't remember seeing them at the table when we were fighting for Yasi Martinez. Um, but one of the things I, I'm, I'm, am thankful for, um, again, is the way Navajo Nation, um, President and also our council um, stood against this bill, um, because it was not fair, um, distribution. There was more funding going out to our pueblo students than it was Navajo students. And I know one of the things I heard was, you know, "We will fix that after the funding is approved." That's not how it works. I mean, we, they need, everybody needs to be on the same page and see it black and white, how the funds will be distributed. And yes, it is a lot of money, but um, we need to see it. We need to see the fairness on paper for our students. And we just can't say, "Oh, we'll fix it after it gets approved." That's not, that's not fair to our students to, to say that. And how about if it's not fixed? You know, you know, we, we, we would be in, in a greater, um, I don't know. I mean, it's like lying to the people, you know, saying that we're gonna fix it later and it's not fixed. Um, and, you know, I think it is also embarrassing when we do have people that don't provide us the tribal consultation, or not tribal consultation, the, the consultation to us as being the largest school district with the greatest amount of now, uh, Dene students, um, and talking to us about it. You know, I mean, there, there's a lot of things that I think they would try, we would think, to help us understand, but we didn't even get the consultation we deserve, um, during this discussion on this bill.
I didn't have one legislator talk to me about any bill. Well, I'd, I'd one, uh, but most of them never made mention. So it's like, things happen up in Santa Fe. Um, and we have, we have to, we have to pay people to be there every day just to figure out what they're trying to do, whether it's behind the scenes or what. But it, it's been fascinating to me. I, I, I hope that we have a, a few more opportunities, um, for, for legislators to, to talk with us about what they want, since we're their constituents.
And, and I would just add Superintendent Hyatt, you asked, you know, you mentioned that Zuni is probably the largest pueblo. So I'm gonna give you the population numbers which illustrate the point. When you just do a flat amount to an Indian tribe or pueblo, you create almost an inevitable inequity. There are about eighty thousand Navajos that live in New Mexico. Zuni is the largest pueblo with eleven thousand people, followed by Laguna and Isleta, which are both at about eight thousand. And then from there, it can drop dramatically. You know, the population of the Sandia Pueblo is, you know, about five hundred members. So when you, when you just do block sets amount of money, it, you run into this problem of, how do you equally disperse it so that each student benefits equally? And that's the point you're trying to make. Let me talk about capital outlay real quick. So in the last legislative session, uh, the amount of money that got back in terms of capital outlay, and of course, this is, this is sort of, for lack of a better way to put it, your infrastructure, equipment money. This is usually financed through severance tax bonds. So they're looking for construction, bricks and mortar, anything that can last as long as the life of the bond. Now, because of the state's financial situation, most capital outlay has been funded with cash in the last, uh, few legislative sessions. So last year, it was zero. Um, this year, we're moving in the right direction, but it's still not nearly as high, in my opinion, as it should be. So what was, uh, obtained this year for capital outlay, uh, was, and this has not been signed by the governor yet, I want to emphasize that. This is an appropriation bill, which means she does have line item veto authority on any bill with money in it. Capital outlay is the golden example. Every governor, since statehood is always line item something out of the capital outlay bill. So we've got, uh, uh, Giovanna put in a request for eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for, um, interactive projects that turn gym name, gymnasium spaces into active educational environments. Projects to fully engage students in visual, auditory, and kinesthetic learning. Uh, we did get three hundred thousand dollars for that initiative. After March tenth, twelfth, around there, there will be a published list showing who put up this three hundred thousand dollars, where did it come from? As of right now, we don't exactly know. We're pretty sure at least part of it is from Representative Wanda Johnson, but we don't know until that, that list is officially published. There was also one hundred and sixty thousand dollars appropriated to the Gallup McKinley County School District for program services and resources for STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math programs at this district. And that was a hundred and, hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And we're, again, we'll know when the list is published, but we're, we're very, very confident that came from Representative Patty Lundstrom. So if Representative Johnson put in the whole three hundred thousand dollars, and if Representative Lundstrom put in the one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you can see that we still have more work to do and we have a gap because we're not getting, we're not getting one hundred percent capital outlay support from members of the legis- legislature who have constituents in this district, in your school district. Diplomatic way to say it.
I'll, I'll put it less diplomatic.
Okay.
Um, so the legisla- legislators in our area actually ask us every year to talk to them about our needs. Um, they ask the city and the county and, and others. And so we actually take the time to actually put things together, to actually go into this meeting, um, and actually ask and let them know about these, these, these projects um, that were listed earlier. We actually had students there and others presenting about the needs for STEM programs in our elementaries and some dollars for career pathway, um, technology for our students. And so we go there and we present, and then I'm trying to count up all of our legislators here. We have Senator Munoz, Senator Pinto, is there Senator Sanchez? Part of our county. And we have Senator, I'm not sure, no, no, he's not. It's Shendo. Senator Shendo. And then on representative side, we have Representative Lundstrom, Representative Johnson, Representative Garcia, Representative Alcon. Does that sound complete?
Yeah.
Somebody that touches our, our school district.
The senators are Munoz, Pinto.
And Shendo, okay.
That's seven.
And Johnson.
And so, first of all, not, not all of them showed up. Um, I think Senator Pinto came in late, but didn't even go up and sit on the stand. But, so then we go and present this, and, and how much, how many dollars does, do the representatives get? Do we know? It's a million something, I'm guessing.
The senators got, and remember, this is discretionary money, they can spend any way they want.
Right.
Senators this year, I believe, got three million.
Each.
Each.
Okay. So nine million for those three.
And the House members would have gotten less than that, I want to say, two point four, two point two.
Oh, quite a bit more than I thought. Okay, two points something million. I mean, then obviously, there's a lot of constituents in the area that, 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 you know, ask for these dollars. Um, but given that, um, our, our students have been shortchanged for decades and that we've had to fight along with some of these people to get some of these dollars back, which we do appreciate. Um, it was, it was pretty disheartening that only a few gave money. Now, uh, Representative Johnson mentioned that she gave two hundred thousand. So there may be a hundred thousand there that either, she had pitched in more or it could have come from another legislator, and I'm not sure who that is. Representative Lundstrom said that she committed a hundred and sixty thousand also, and we'll express our appreciation. And online, we actually, and we'll continue to do that all year. It's interesting, this is an election year. Um, this would have been a big help for them, given that these dollars reach all the students and we're the largest employer and probably do the largest amount of media, uh, to the community about, um, people supporting our students here in our area, especially when it comes to things like this. Um, so it was a little disheartening that more, uh, of our legislators didn't actually give dollars to the, to their students who touch every single family in our community, whether they're related to somebody in our community, um, or whether their parents are voting, uh, members of their community. Um, and so we celebrated Lundstrom and Johnson, and we'll celebrate if there's somebody else that we missed, we'll celebrate them for the year until the next session. Um, and so we just want to make sure we express our appreciation to them. But also, if other districts that I talk to don't have a hard time in getting a few dollars out of their legislators to their students, so it's unfortunate that our dollars go to places, maybe not even have, there's bills and other things that dollars go to other students, not us. And so what I want to do, and I think this would be good for the, the school board in the school district to do, is once all this is public, I'd like to know where the two and a half million from each person and the, and the three million went.
That, that will be.
I think that'd be very telling.
Well, that will be, that will be in the published document.
And so it'll, it'll specifically line, basically line out exactly what dollars from, from that pot of money went where, correct?
Yes, it will.
I think that would be fascinating. And, and, and I want to, I want to acknowledge Senator Munoz gave us a lot of money about three, four years ago for public school stadium. We were very appreciative of, it was, it was a big amount of money that helped us fix that stadium. Um, but I have never seen, unless a hundred thousand's coming from Pinto, Shendo helped us a lot with Impact Aid, but I haven't seen any capital dollars come from him. Garcia helped us with Impact Aid. Um, Alcon helped us, but I believe Alcon, I have it in writing, I believe he said that he was, he's not gonna give us money. He's not, so that, that was interesting that he took that stance, um, when, when he represents a big part of our, our district. Um, and so it's unfortunate that somebody would make such a bold statement that they're not gonna give us any money and just for, I guess it sounded like personal reasons for him, that he was upset. Got his feelings hurt or something, but, I mean, he's a legislator and, uh, he works for us. Um, and I, I wish, I wish there's a few people on this list that understood that, but there's a lot of people on this list that do a really good job for us in fighting for things. They ran bills for us. Um, but I think it's sad, and I think, I think the county and the city and others should stand up a little bit more and, and, and hold some of these people accountable for the dollars and where, where they go. Because our city needs money. Um, we have a lot of problems in the city, our county, our chap- some of our chapter areas, some of those dollars in our community, the roads, bridges. There's lots of needs in our rural areas, um, for dollars from these kinds of dollars. Uh, and, and I, I just, there just needs to be transparency, in my opinion. And I think there's a lot of great people, there are legislators in our area, and there's some that could get a little bit more focused back on who needs the dollars, um, who, who is, who is, who is here in our county. Um, and it's interesting, it's an election season, and I thought there were more dollars would get spread out. But we'll see. We'll see where those dollars went.
Okay. Um, I would just add Superintendent Hyatt, members of the board.
Excuse me?
This is also an area that self and Charlie Marcus need to work on more. Um, figure out exactly what's going on. I, I will throw this out there. Rightly or wrongly, I have heard enough comments that, in my opinion, there is a perception, right or wrong, among some members of the legislature who feel because of the Impact Aid victory, Yasi Martinez, there's a perception that this is a school district that has more money than it knows what to do with.
And I, I think that's fascinating.
Right or wrong, that perception. And I think that's part of what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
It's ignorance, if anybody says that. So if, I would love to know who says that. I think it'd be very good for the public to know, and actually look at the dollars. Impact Aid was great. It was twenty-four million more dollars, um, that we pushed for and it, we're able to build a coalition to actually get. But nobody ever talks about the loss of tax revenue. Power plant closing down, gas plant closing down, and those types of things that significantly took dollars away from us and our ability to bond for dollars.
Correct.
Also, s- schools are almost, just to construct them, which we have ten in the works right now, they're all, some of them are double or triple, almost triple more the cost per square foot due to inflation. And so if you think about twenty-four million dollars, when you have a school now that costs just twenty-four million dollars to build in and of itself for one school than it was four or five years ago, um, it's, it's fascinating. It, it, sometimes I think that, um, people just say things, just for the sake of saying things without facts and, and data behind their, their comments. Um, but I find it very interesting that, um, people would say that, especially when it's been ve- very vocal, not this year, but the last year, about how each of our students got about thirty dollars from Indian education funds, uh, uh, the prior year, two years ago. And some pueblo students got over a thousand dollars per student for their, for their school district. Um, yet we had some local, a local, at least one local legislator that was pushing against that and supporting giving all these dollars unfairly to other tribal students, um, in different school district. I thought that was, that's crazy. Like, we're, we're the ones that elect our legislators here, and, uh, our students and their families are a big part of that. Um, and so, yeah, just inflation, just bonding capacity eats significantly into that, those dollars that we earned. And I know I heard at least, at least one comment about cash balance that we had. Obviously, we got a lot of federal funds. Sometimes there's cash balances to, to cover federal grants that we have. And we educate the LFC over and over and over about that, yet they still try to say districts have this large cash balance. Well, there's reasons for the cash balance. The state has like a thirty to forty percent cash balance. We might have five percent or less. Yet they start pointing fingers at us. Sometimes I maybe that's to deflect away from themselves and the cash balance that they carry over every year, and they don't put those dollars into the communities in the state of New Mexico. I think that's an interesting point that should be raised more often in the state of New Mexico about what's the cash balance of the state of New Mexico, one of the most wealthy right now in the country, per student, or per, per citizen. Yet they keep all these dollars. And maybe that's a good thing, maybe it's not. But districts have reasons for it too. Maybe we're building a project, we have to save dollars, covering federal funds, um, which we have to do every year. We have over ten million dollars every year just for districts that we have to keep that cash on hand to cover reimbursement issues that we have with the Public Education Department and grants that we receive from the feds or from the state. Um, and so I think those con- those, those types of topics should come up more often because people talk about it outside of public, one-on-one.
Right.
But let, let's have a public meeting and actually lay down all the facts, have a conversation about it. And nobody's perfect. Obviously, the school district has, always there's things that we can improve in. But when it comes to fighting for funding, um, and when we need it, we're, we're not, we're not making it up that we, we need some of these things for our students. And COVID funds are gone. There are no more COVID R funds coming into the school district, at least as of right now. And we have done a very good job at spending all of that. I know the Navajo Nation is very concerned right now. They still have a billion dollars they have to spend by September. Well, our staff, our business staff and others have done a great job, and the school board has done an incredible job of approving those things so we can get those dollars expended. Those aren't reoccurring dollars. We've had to cover some of those items also, uh, to make sure. And so this, this concept from the LFC about cash balances is so manipulative, not only manipulative, but false, um, and misleading that it, it's sad that that continues to happen, so.
Well, clearly Superintendent Hyatt, you have heard some of the same comments I have.
Yeah, it's behind the scenes, sir.
Correct. Um, I just want to hit, this is my last topic. I just want to hit real briefly where, what the LES C Legislative Education Study Committee is gonna be focusing on, starting in July, with respect to the S E G, the State Equalization Guarantee Funding Formula. So they do want to tweak certain pieces of it. And here they are, just real quick what the areas are. And they've made it real clear, there would not be legislation this session. They would address this in the twenty twenty-four interim, which really starts to kick off in July. And then we will see legislation in the next session. So with respect to S E G, um, they want to strengthen the formula's responsiveness to the current and evolving needs of students, and these are the key considerations. They're gonna look at assessing the adequacy of the basic program components. Now, that's very wide open. Basically, I think that means just about everything's on the table. Um, they want to take a closer look at elementary, physical education, and fine arts programs. They want to assess whether the Teacher Cost Index, which I am not an expert on. They want to assess whether the Teacher Cost Index is aligned with an effective career ladder for all educators um, to improve their instructional leadership. Uh, they want to assess whether size adjustment components can be modified or streamlined to assess the needs of smaller schools in rural areas. Uh, this is a big one. They want to modify the income component of- This is a big one, they want to modify the income component of the at-risk index to strengthen its accuracy in identifying concentrations of poverty. And just three more, they want to look at transitioning to a census-based model of funding special education. They want to phase out, they want to consider phasing out charter school activities, homeschool activities, homeschooling student program components to help streamline the formula, to repurpose those program units.
What does that mean, phase out that stuff?
I, I couldn't exactly tell you. Their key consideration, number seven, it says phasing out the charter school activities, homeschool activities and homeschool student program components, which may streamline the funding formula while allowing for the repurposing of those program units to other formula components. That's what they're going to be looking at. And the last one, it says there may be opportunities to embed components in the state equalization guarantee for career and technical education programs, community schools and Native American students and English learners. So, starting in July, that will obviously be something we're going to be monitoring and watching very closely as it develops and I'll be continuing to communicate with Jivana.
Can we get involved and get in those guys' ear when they start working on this stuff?
So the answer to that question is yes. I will tell you, in my opinion, I have already been, I have already participated in some very high-level discussions directly with the director of the LES C and her staff and also-
You're going to have to use your outside voice now.
We got to buy those more expensive batteries.
Oh, while he's fixing that, you know, I just wanted to also hit a point that, you know, with Patty Lundstrom's, Representative Lundstrom's, you know, giving of the 160,000, you know, I would like to also mention that she was also our sponsor for our Impact Aid monies. So, you know, I'm truly grateful to her for that, for carrying that bill for us and, and allowing us to be able to get that 20 million dollars.
Yeah, I mean, thank you. I know I mentioned some others, it wasn't because I didn't think of them also, I was just thinking of some of the ones we hadn't talked about, but Representative Lundstrom did carry that bill. Munoz, Senator Munoz was very vocal on that bill and supporting it. Everybody, for the most part, on the list supported it. Senator Pinto did not support it, she actually worked against it for a long time until it was inevitable and then she voted for it. But there was unfortunate comments made that we shouldn't receive those dollars in the beginning of that, that discussion, which is unfortunate that that's, that she was kind of toeing the line of some of the legislators in Santa Fe that were opposing that bill. She kind of fell in line with some of them, but we're glad she eventually at least voted for it when it was inevitable, so.
So I just wanted to finish up my comment about the LES C. I've been, I have participated in some very high-level discussions with the LES C staff and Jivana and Superintendent Hyatt. And I can tell you, there's a very, very strong, high level of respect from the LES C for your superintendent, for this body and for-
Just talk really loud. Yeah, good talk.
So the answer is yes.
Good.
If you want to provide input, they're certainly going to be agreeable to that. You know, one of the areas at high-level discussions, which I'm not going to go into, is transportation. With, there's language in the budget on that. I think it's okay, I'm not sure, Jivana thinks it's okay.
Well, we don't know. They didn't do an analysis. And so this is the problem sometimes in Santa Fe, is they, they do analysis on that they, they know are going to work, they think are positive, they're going to tell you how much money you're going to receive, but for some reason, on transportation, we ask for the analysis of what does it change for the dollars for the school districts and then they can't tell us. Usually though, what that tells me is it's probably not very fair, but we'll see if it's, if we get more money or not compared to the other districts or how that works. I mean, it should be a pretty, pretty simple thing to fix, but it's been a complicated topic for years and it's one of the items that may still be left unresolved with the Yasi Martinez lawsuit, that along with several other items. But that's an interesting, interesting thing when we talked about, to the LES C about that, that there was not an analysis, so.
We really want to get involved, if we can, with that process. I mean, those, those folks in, a lot of times are just absolutely blind to the issues that, you know, specific issues that we deal with out here in these rural areas. And there's other places in the state that are in a similar situation as us, but I mean, we just need to make sure that, that it's built into the funding machine. And if they would do that, then they may not, you know, may not have problems with Yasi Martinez and Impact Aid and all these things that, you know, I mean, it, it's just, they're just totally, totally blind to the issues that we deal with out here.
Thank, thank you, President Mortensen. I just want to say that concludes my presentation. In closing, I want to say I consider it an honor and a privilege to represent this school district and I enjoy working with all of you. I'm very accessible. You can reach me anytime, ask any question. I primarily communicate, of course, to Superintendent Hyatt and Jivana, but certainly accessible to anyone. So on the subject of transportation, I have a feeling that Jivana wants to make a couple other comments.
May I, may I ask just one more question before you wrap up, sir? The appropriations from each of our legislators, is that whatever they decided to do, is it in stone at this point and it just hasn't been made public? Or is there still time for, for folks to come around and?
It's, it's in-
It's done.
The only thing, those appropriations that I mentioned, the 300,000 and the 160, they are now exclusively subject to the veto pen of the governor. She's either going to sign them and they're inked, or she will line item veto them and they're gone. Or she could possibly take no action at all on the entire bill, all 300 pages of it.
It could happen.
And then the whole bill is dead. I don't think that's going to happen.
So the ship has sailed at this point for a lot of legislators.
The dollar amounts cannot be changed, or the purpose.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask, JD, any, anything on if there might be a special session yet or is, and then also after that, I just wanted to go ahead and, and say thank you very much for everything you did in working as our lobbyist for Galt McKinney County Schools. You know, just being up there, the couple of days that we were and seeing you and watching you, I know that you're a very hard worker and I do appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you Board Member Mitchell, I appreciate that. What's that?
One of the things that, I don't know if we're able to do this again before the next session, is we used to bring all of our lobbyists in, or not lobbyists, sorry, our legislators in to talk about, you know, some of the bills they were either proposing or looking at and seeing what our, our priorities as a board or as a, as a district and even with McKinley County, you know, we, because roads was one of the big things and, you know, we, we sat and talked with them. And I don't know if that's able, if we can do that again. And I think that shows if they make the effort to come, and yes, I know they're busy and maybe they've got something else, but, you know, the majority of them would come. And, and I think I really appreciated that from them, that would come and show up and express their opinion. And some of the stuff, we had to explain to them why it wasn't fair to our children or we had issues with it or something and everybody was on the same page. But when we, we don't do that no more and then we get, you know, it's like we're trying to talk to several different legislators up there and it kind of gets more difficult. And I don't know if we could even do that as a, like one of our board meetings, so even our constituents in our, our, our communities can see who's really involved in those meetings like that, like an open meeting, you know, where we can live stream it or something. You know, I think, I think that would show that our legislators need to come meet us and talk with us too, so, just a thought.
Thank you. If I, if I may, President Mortensen, I'd like to answer Board Member Kevin Mitchell's question.
Sure, please.
And back to you, Ms. Benali, it never hurts to, never hurts to send out an invitation. And then it's up to them. Prospects for a special session? Personally, I was very surprised to hear the governor say that not enough done was pub, not enough done on public safety, to the extent that a special session is warranted. I certainly understand her frustration that not enough, that we could do more. She has been a strong proponent on changing the, the legal burden associated with pre-trial release. Right now, you know, the, the District Attorney's Office, the burden is on them to prove that a person is dangerous and should not be released. A lot of people, including the governor, think the burden should be on the person who's accused of committing the crime, for them to prove why they're not dangerous. So shifting that burden is something she wants to do and that is very difficult to do. But in terms of public safety, there were, there were four initiatives passed, which I thought were pretty surprising. There were two gun control bills that passed. One limits how, how close you can be to a polling place with a firearm. That distance has now been significantly increased. And there's going to be a seven-day waiting period enacted. Oh, when that law takes effect, I know she'll sign that legislation, that law will go into effect in May or June. And we will now be a state that has a seven-day waiting period. I believe in California, it's 14 days. In New Mexico, I believe it's, it's going to be seven. I think I have that right. I know New Mexico's going to be seven. And then there was an enhanced sentencing bill, which you don't see this legislature pass very often, but they did increase the penalties, the mandatory sentences and penalties for second-degree murder and attempted second-degree murder. And then the other big one is there is a administrative procedural change in the court system now, that if you are a felon and you are out on pre-trial release and you commit another felony, the new system that's going to go in place, that I'm sure the governor's going to sign, is that the chief clerk of the court will, as soon as they find out that a person who's been released for committing a serious crime, as soon as they find out they have been arrested again for a felony, the detention center is notified and that person must be held. That person must be held for a minimum of, or up to five days, so that the original judges who were involved in that first case can now be notified that the person they released has committed a felony and is back in custody. And that original judge now gets the chance to look at those conditions of pre-trial release and either modify them or revoke them. That is not currently happening. We are having people who are out on pre-trial release, committing a felony, they come in front of a new judge who doesn't take into consideration the previous crime and they say, oh, this doesn't look so bad and they release them. Now, the original judge who set those original conditions of pre-trial release is going to be involved. That is a major, major change in our court procedures that, you know, frankly, I was surprised to see that bill pass. So in terms of public safety, I thought it was a pretty good session for public safety, but the governor is still frustrated and she wants some bigger things and I think that's what's driving her push to call for a special session. So your question, will there be one? I'll believe it when I see it.
Thank you, Mr. Bullington, appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
For our staff, just so they know, House Bill Two is a 3% mandatory raise. That's probably, maybe that's the most important thing probably for our staff than any of the other things we just talked about. So there obviously, union negotiations take place before final determinations, but there has to at least be a 3% across the board for all staff in Mexico, so. President Mortensen, that concludes that part of the report. I'll go on with our next part with the, which is a little, much shorter, but thank you, Mr. Bullington. We have Assistant Superintendent to talk about our recruitment and retention, a little bit of information that we just received.
Thank you.
So Ms. Montano will give a short report on that. And I have one last item before we conclude.
President Mortensen, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, attracting and retaining teachers can be very challenging. We appreciate everything that the board has supported us with that challenge. So today I want to talk about the retention rate of our teachers as we just, actually our staff, as we just sent out our letters of intent at the end of January. So if you'll take a look at the handout I gave you as well as what we put up on the screen, our overall retention rate for staff returning for 24, 25 is at 95%.
Members, you have some questions for us?
Mr. Mortensen, Ms. Montano, which percentage does our bus drivers fall into?
That would be our classified staff.
Fourth column, pretty good, 95%.
Yeah. And what about the percentages on like our food service or our subs?
So subs is contracted out as well as food service. We do still have a, a small group of, of staff under GMCS with food service and that would also be under classified staff.
Those are under class, all, all three of those?
Yes.
Subs and food service or?
Yes, subs, we actually contract out through a, an outside company, so they're not included in this.
The other thing is they don't, they're not contracted employees, they don't receive a contract. So these are for people that receive a contract, that say they're coming back next year, will be working for us and receive a contract. Food service, substitutes don't receive contracts, they're hourly, straight.
So do they do something similar to see if their staff is coming back? That we can see what their rate, yeah, what their retention rates are? Like SFE, how many SFE employees are coming back next year? And if there's, I, I mean, that would be-
We don't have that, but we can ask them.
You can get it.
Yeah, and then I think, like with the subs, and then also I think we're still contracting our security?
Partially, yeah.
Yeah, and that would probably be another one.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mortensen, members of the board.
One question real quick. Can you give me an idea how many, how many substitutes we have? Like long-term subs? I know day-to-day is, is a different thing, but long-term subs working?
So I actually had a meeting with them last week. We currently have 148 subs in the, in the pool. Not all of those pick up positions on a daily basis. They average probably about 100 subs that are consistent on picking up jobs, but not every day. It's kind of, you know, some subs like-
I may have been using the wrong terminology. When I say like long- I may have been using the wrong terminology. When I say like, long-term sub, I mean, like, when you tell a sub, you're the teacher, until we hire somebody to come in here.
I would have to look at our vacant positions to see on long-term.
Right.
I would say probably, I'm guessing, maybe less than fifteen. This point, and I, I could be off a little bit there.
So this is, yeah, because it, I'm just curious. This is good. I mean, when we see people that are returning, but it's not necessarily a reflection of where we are with our capacity. Like, how many, like, do we still have, like, you know, a hundred people still, you know, a hundred teachers to hire, or something like that? It's just, it's just reflective of who's coming back.
I've mentioned this many times in our board meetings. Probably ten years ago, we'd go through about two-hundred-and-fifty-plus teachers a year that would leave the district.
Right.
We're far less than a hundred, and several of those are leaving because of their visas have ran out.
Yeah.
Foreign teachers. Obviously, there's gonna be retirements every year, so it's actually very, very low. We went basically from a seventy percent retention rate roughly, to where a good, or over ninety percent retention rate. Obviously, some of these people may still leave, but for the most part, as of right now, they're committing to stay. And so, that's a significant increase in retention that we've had. And it's not just teachers, it's administrators. We, there's been several times where we've had double-digit administrative turnover, and we have very few this year, so.
That's fantastic. I mean, I think it's reflective of your hard work, and, and, you know, the culture that we foster, and, and things like that. I just, I was curious about that long-term sub thing. It almost ruined my marriage earlier this year, so I wanted to make sure we're still, like, working on that.
Mr. Mortensen, I have, can we receive that data, that data, Ms. Montano, of where, you know, like, I would like to know how many teachers we still need at, through high, you know, like, that kind of data? And maybe what is happening to, uh, what were they called? Like, not retention. When we go out to search for...
Recruiting.
Recruitment. What are the recruitment plans, and where are you guys still searching? Because I know you guys used to hit up a lot of the universities and, you know, stuff like that. What are, what are the upcoming plans for the new school year?
Sure. President Mortensen, Ms. Benali, we are currently, our plan includes a lot of advertising. Since COVID, a lot of more things are done online. I think that's where people go to look for jobs. As I mentioned, we do a lot of geo-fencing, so that includes, like, when people are searching for teacher jobs, GMCS will, will pop up. Those pop-ups you see a lot when you're doing searches, that's some, and we target certain areas. We've done billboards, we've done commercials. We do reach out to universities. We have several contacts at different universities, especially in New Mexico and our surrounding states, that we reach out, send out our, our job postings to them individually, even to, to the students graduating. We haven't done as many trips recently, because the data just showed we weren't getting that many people that way. A lot of newspaper ads, we kind of look at the, at, at areas where we think more, more people will move in. And then, of course, our signing incentives are big, because we, we increase those signing incentives with people from McKinley County, or that graduated from New Mexico. So we definitely hit on, on that. And then word of mouth, things like that. We, we also, we try to track some of that data on, on where our, our new hires are, are getting this information, and then we base that on the following year, and what we're gonna do. Still, the newspaper or social media ads are, are big.
Thank you.
I think a lot of people also commented to me about our little commercials, you know, our videos that we, that we did out, and, you know, from Mr. Hyatt to, you know, different recruitments. That, that was really good.
Agreed.
Those aren't coming from me. They're, they're making me be a part of those commercials, I promise. I do not have any desire to be in those, but...
It's like a second career, I think. Side hustle.
I get so many comments, it's, I don't know. If, if it helps the district, I'll do it, obviously. Lastly, for our report, just really quickly, I just want to make, I've never thought I'd ever have to give a report like this, but fortunately or unfortunately, I guess it depends how you look at it, I make sure I give the, the school board and the community heads up. Last week, I had a meeting with the, there was health officials, PED, and some company. I guess last, or actually during COVID, that there was a, the governor was talking about testing waste in schools to determine if there's COVID in the schools. So they would actually put a device into the sewer to test it for COVID. I don't know if you remember, ever hear anything about that, but it didn't, it never happened that I'm aware of. Well, this last summer, there was another emergency health order done by the governor. And this isn't to test COVID, it's to test drugs that come through the sewer in schools. And so they've been going around the state, testing six schools, I think at a time, for drugs in wastewater. So they tested Rayma High School as part of a group of charters in high schools, or schools across the state, and then they gave us a report on it. Now, just really quickly, they're gonna release this report, which is fine. I, I don't think it's surprising that there were people that might have drugs in their system in our communities. But you can't really narrow it down where that came from, right? We have visitors, we have basketball games. They tried to tell me that the wastewater all clears out all the time, and I asked them if they'd ever opened up a sewer, and seeing that wastewater doesn't always necessarily replace itself, and there's still residue things that happen. Like, again, I don't want to talk about this too much, but we don't know where the drug came from, or who had it in their system. They could, it could have been from their system from the night before. We don't know, but they test all different kinds of drugs, and they gave us a report. And there's really not a lot of actionable information that comes out of those reports, but they're basically putting it publicly as if we're supposed to have some response from the school districts. And I voiced my concerns over this, in, in, in that, you know, our students are, they're, we, we do surveys, our students tell us. Obviously, our counselors are heavily involved, and community partners are heavily involved in working with students that may have substance abuse problems. But this particular test doesn't say whether it's coming from a student, or an adult, or a fan, or a guest in the school district. And so it's really hard to get actionable data. And they, they kind of pushed back a little bit, and said, well, we were surprised to see cocaine in, in the sewer system in Rayma. And I said, and the Zuni superintendent was on the call also, and I said, well, we're not surprised, because it's probably in the, in the, kind of in that, in the southern part of our district, it's probably one of the second-most popular drugs used. So we, we obviously knew that, but they didn't. And so it was really interesting, as we talked through why they're doing this, given that the data isn't super helpful, other than it lets you know there's a trace of something. And some of those, some of those substances, they said, there's a probability it's this. They weren't even certain that it was in the system. But nonetheless, it appears as though they're using this to maybe get federal funding for help with prevention and things in the state of Mexico, and maybe for school systems. But I just wanted to give you a heads up, and the community heads up, that they're going around the state, testing sewer systems, coming out of schools, and then giving reports on what drugs they found at that particular period in time. And so, it was interesting, the time that they tested Rayma, three or four of the five days, was a, there was no school. So, I don't know what that means, but, but there's been basketball games and things like that, so, that's all.
Great news. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'll point your attention to the notices communications for your calendars going forward. Yes, yes. And then our new business down here is number seven. Is that what you're here for, Mr. Bell? All right, we're gonna get down here to this approval of high school graduate, graduation competency requirements. So, go ahead. The floor is yours.
It is very hard, Mr. President of the Board, to follow the legislative commentary that we had this morning.
And the cocaine.
And the cocaine. Excited about this.
Mr. Bell, is there a way we can see it on our, on our screen?
Is it not projecting? It's also in your packet. I'm for so, Ms. Benali. So, during March of 2020, the state got rid of all the extra competencies that students had to acquire to graduate because of COVID. And so they're, we're going in from laws to rules now. So the PET is putting in rules again for competencies for students to graduate, starting with this year's eleventh-grade cohort. This year's twelfth-grade cohort, they're going to graduate just by passing the classes, and take, and participating in the state assessment. Next year, it changes slightly, where this group of eleventh-graders will have to show competency outside of the classrooms. They'll have to show competency in one of five, in all five areas: reading, writing, social studies, science, and mathematics. In the past, one of the things, the state test would always count for all those competencies. But if you could look at the first, second, third line down, we take in high school the SAT. Can you, can the board member see that it, does, what?
Mr. Mortensen, thank you. I think my, my question is more towards, like, our special needs children? How, is that completely, am I opening a can of worms? That does not even...
So our special education population, they have IEPs that specify what they have to achieve. If they make the achievement based on what their IEP says, yes, they will graduate.
Okay.
That's very individual student-based.
Okay, thank you.
The rest of this would be all, this is more for the general population trying to graduate.
Mr. Mortensen, so, what, seeing that this is gonna be, I mean, if it's approved and we, we do this, I, I see this as something beneficial to maybe help support increasing graduation rates?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, we, we didn't, we tried to be less restrictive as we went through this, and making it. So it's, you know, easier for students to demonstrate their competency in those different areas. So we want to be as lenient as possible to give students opportunities to show their, their competence in areas, so.
State really likes that SAT, don't they?
Yes. They sure do.
It's gonna have to go away, though, because now they're not requiring Algebra II. So that's built off, that's what the SAT is built off of. And even though that's not a norm reference test, SAT, unfortunately, they're still using as our state exam, and so they're gonna have to come up with another exam.
It's just been a while since I applied to college, but they, they didn't even talk about the SAT back then. It was all ACT. Everything was ACT.
I think somebody came from back east and joined the PED, and that's how we got it. I'd put a hundred bucks on that.
Yeah, UNM didn't require an SAT.
ACT-based.
It's ACT. It's funny.
Thank you.
Maybe that's an area that we can ask our legislators to write a legislation against, that we don't even use it. Their kids are not even, there's no use for it.
They're gonna be getting rid of these tests anyways. They said, you don't have to demonstrate your competency, right?
Yeah, that's what they, they're gonna remove them.
Twenty-four.
The new graduate.
But they're gonna have to take, they're gonna have to change the state, they're still gonna state, use the state, a state test. The feds require the state, in order to get money, to do state testing with students, and so that's one of the reasons why state testing is done. So they're gonna continue with some state test, but using the SAT, first of all, hasn't been appropriate, because it's not culturally relevant, or New Mexico-relevant. But number two, now that they did away with Algebra II, I would suspect that they realize that they're going to have to change that assessment. Legislatively, that's usually not done. Usually, that's PED that, that recognizes that, and we've let them know for the last several years, like, you have an inappropriate test. And now, we'll continue to let them know that it's really, it's extra, it's not relevant at all now, because Algebra II is not required.
Right.
But, I mean, we've let PED know about Impact Aid for over thirty years, and they still didn't listen, till it took a lawsuit. I mean, we're, we're testing our kids for no reason, and we're stressing out teachers for no reason. And it doesn't make sense that we're continuing to do the SAT when it doesn't even, we, it's not utilized.
Well, it counts for the next two years, this year and next year. So, and then the years after that, maybe the next year, because those students aren't freshmen, they're not underneath the new graduation requirement. So it's a few more years out. Thank you, Ms. Bell and Dr. Wayman.
That was gonna be my comment. The new requirements don't start until the freshman class of twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay.
This would go until twenty, the class of twenty-twenty-nine.
So they're gonna have to take the, they're gonna have to change the test by spring of twenty-eight.
Right.
SAT. Up until then, they could still use it, and they probably will, unfortunately. But. Thank you, Dr. Lovato and Dr. Wayman.
Board members, do you have any questions before we read it? Are we ready to take a vote on this thing? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove this. All right. Anybody down there, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mitchell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the next thing on our agenda here, I'll, just to explain what's going on, this evening is our Board Scholar Event, where we're gonna be handing out awards to our, all the kids that are, are fantastic scholars in our district. We'd like to invite everybody to come out and check that out and celebrate our kids. It's gonna be at the Gallup High Gymnasium at, or not the gym, the auditorium, sorry, at six PM this evening. They're gonna start with the elementary school kids first, and then move on after that for the mid-schoolers and the high schoolers.
Mr. Morton?
Seven-thirty for the secondary kids, okay?
Mr. Mortensen, I, I'd like to make a motion that we go into recess at two forty-eight.
All right.
Second.
Second. Go ahead and roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. We'll reconvene this evening at six PM at the...